Ready, Matt? Ready. I called Russell Springs City Council meeting, or Agricall meeting, March 14th to order. Chris, can I get a roll call? See if we've got a call.
Ms. Mann.
I'm here.
Mr. Blake. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, Chris. The first thing on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes. And Chris has sent them out, so I hope you've had a chance to read over the minutes. And are there any subtraction or additions to the minutes?
We made a motion to accept the minutes.
You got a motion, Cody, to accept them. Need a second?
Second.
Second, but sure, you roll call, Chris.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next thing on the agenda is the... Pay the cash disbursements or financial statements, in other words, just to pay the bills. Same, Chris has sent that out to you. I hope you've had an opportunity to go over them and look at them. And are there any discussions about any of the bills? Anybody got any questions on any of the bills? If not, I'd entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Got a motion. But Rick, need a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead. Lisa.
Three way down.
Ms. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Corey, any further? Timmy and Gladys are here. Good to see you.
Good to be here.
I remember Timmy and her priors. My wife's doing well for the ones of you all who've called me and texted me about her. Appreciate that. Thank you all.
I know what you're saying.
The next thing on the agenda is old business. We don't have nothing in old business, I don't think, unless any of the councils got something on old business.
Ricky's here. Ricky's here.
I'm here, too. Ain't got none.
Yeah, he mentioned it was all right. We'll move right into new business. The first thing on new business is the second reading of ordinance for water rates. Sponsored by Timmy Hudson. And we're fortunate enough to be lucky enough to have Damon here with us tonight. And he was here the first time, so Damon, the floor is yours, my friend.
Yeah, with permission from the council, I just read attorney summary of the ordinance. Ordinance number 2024-01. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Russell Springs, Kentucky approving an increase in water rates. The city of Russell Springs charges its customers to offset the city of Jamestown, Kentucky wholesale water rate increase. Whereas the city of Jamestown, Russell County, Kentucky, sells water on a wholesale basis to Russell Springs. Whereas Jamestown has increased the wholesale rate it charges Russell Springs by approximately 31.5%. Whereas based upon water purchases from Jamestown during the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, the estimated annual increase cost to Russell Springs is approximately $264,529. Whereas prudent financial management dictates that Russell Springs take immediate action by enacting an ordinance adjusting its retail and wholesale water rates commensurate with Jamestown's wholesale water rate increase. And the only difference between the ordinance from first reading and this one is that the effective date has been pushed back 30 days from March 1st to April 1st.
Will we have back pay for the month of March?
I'm sorry?
The increase was affected from then, March 1st.
Well, it was effective a few months ago, okay, so...
I mean, will they expect us to pay in March?
Yes.
Back pay for March?
Yes, they will.
Is there interest on that?
We done paid it.
Okay, yeah.
We've paid her bill as well.
I think she's asking when it goes into effect for us to go out on the bills on April 1st. This is for the city of Russell Springs residents and water.
No, she's asking back pay. We'll have to pay.
No, we've paid all those current.
We've paid, we're paid it in current. We've paid her bill.
And one reason you were able to keep it current is because, if I might just bear, this city, unlike a lot of cities, had the foresight several years ago, I guess it was 2019, I think, to pass a COLA cost of living adjustment. Based on social security. And that has really helped you maintain your financial strength. I wish more cities would do that.
Anybody else got any more questions? For Damon? Any discussion down? Need a roll call? No, we need a motion.
Yeah, I need a motion.
I make a motion. Accept ordinance number 2024-01.
Thank you, Timmy. Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
I mean, we gotta do it, so, yeah.
Ms. Mann.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thanks, council. The next thing is a second agreement of ordinance 2024-02, the rates, the sewer rates. Damon, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And again, I'll do the attorney summary. Ordinance number 2024-02. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Russell Springs, Kentucky approving an increase in the sewer rates the city of Russell Springs charges its customers to offset the city of Jamestown, Kentucky wholesale wastewater treatment rate increase. Whereas the city of Jamestown, Russell County, Kentucky, provides wastewater treatment on a wholesale basis for Russell Springs. Whereas Jamestown has increased the wholesale wastewater treatment rate it charges Russell Springs by approximately 50.7%. Whereas based upon the wastewater treatment services purchased from Jamestown during a recent 12-month period, the estimated annual increase cost to Russell Springs is approximately $290,500. Whereas prudent financial management dictates that Russell Springs take immediate action by enacting an ordinance adjusting its retail sewer rates commensurate with Jamestown's wholesale sewer rate increase. And then again, the only change is the effective date pushed back 30 days from March 1st until April 1st.
Any questions?
And as you know, the consumer price index, the COLA, was on water and sewer both. So, again, the same reason there, you're able to absorb some of this because of your financial strength.
Anybody got any more questions? If not, I need a motion to accept the agreement, interlock, or the second reading.
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Ms. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you, council. Most of all, thank you, Damon. I think Damon...
I'll hang around. I'm sorry.
I said, "Thank you, Damon."
Yeah.
"I think you've got a prescient leash for the radio and for them. Meeting's over, so I will not discuss this any further. If you've got any questions, you can discuss them with them." The next thing on the agenda is an interlocking agreement for the homeless prevention and support. Chris, I want to read that.
This is the homeless agreement that we've had with the county for, what, three years now?
Yeah.
And nothing's really changed on it, but I'll go ahead and read it. 2023-2024 Interlock for Homeless Prevention and Support Agreement. This agreement, since hearing after agreement, is entered into this blank day. And it says, "A favorable of March, by and between the city of Jamestown, Kentucky, city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, Russell County, Kentucky, by and through the Russell County Fiscal Court, which will be known as the Parties for the purpose of establishing a reliable and efficient homeless prevention and support for Russell County, Kentucky for the time period set forth below. Whereas all of the above named Parties recognize need for a continued reliable and efficient homeless prevention and support for all citizens of Russell County, Kentucky. Whereas the Parties agree that each entity or party named herein benefits directly from a comprehensive homeless prevention and support land, therefore, recognize the respective obligations, benefits, and burdens of each party to contribute to the continued stability of the current commodity community concerned. Whereas the Parties desire to be in compliance with all applicable state and/or federal requirements or policy. Now, therefore, is mutual agreed by the undersigned Parties that a homeless prevention and support service is hereby, or herein, established under the parameters and conditions set forth in this agreement, Section 1.1.1 Source of Funding. One point one, source of funding. Agreement, party, or said by agreement of the Parties, the HPSS shall be funded by the following sources. Number one, city of Russell Springs yearly obligation of $1,500.00. Says, city of Jamestown yearly obligation of $1,500.00. And the Russell County Fiscal Court yearly obligation $1,500.00. One point two, Schedule of Payment. The obligations described in Section 1.1 shall be paid upon execution of this agreement and all money be held in an account designated for the homeless prevention and support by and through the Russell County Judge's Office. One point three, Operations. Parties agree that all local law enforcement agencies, including Russell Springs Police Department, Jamestown Police Department, and Russell County Sheriff's Department shall be triggering agents to provide support for any homeless person found subject to this agreement. Further following background checks and the housing situation being obtained by and said law enforcement officer. It is agreed by the Parties that the law enforcement officer shall transport the individual to the Springs Motel or other contracting agent to be housed for that evening, not to exceed two days of stay. Payment for housing shall be made by the office of the Russell County Judge's Office in monthly installments following property invoices have been presented by a Springs Motel or other contracting party. Parties further agree that the contract rights for daily stay at said Springs Motel or other contracting agents shall be approved by all parties set forth under and in conjunction with all three entities. Section two, Homeless Prevention and Support Service Board. Two point one is Homeless Prevention and Support Service Board. The Parties hereby create a Homeless Prevention and Support Service Board, and it shall be comprised of the following. Number one, Russell County Sheriff or the designated. Number two, Russell County Attorney or designated. Number three, Russell County Judge Executive or designated. Number four, Mayor of Jamestown or designated. And number five, Mayor of Russell Springs or designated. Two point two, Management Control, Priorities and Policy. The Homeless Prevention and Support Board shall have management control, management, should have management control, as hereby defined as the authority of the Board set in effect. Number one, priorities and two, policy governing the operation said service. Two point three, recourse to fiscal court and cities. Because the Russell County Fiscal Court, the city of Jamestown, and the city of Russell Springs are providing funding for the service, the Parties agree that it would be appropriate for periodic recourse to be made to all parties by the Russell County Fiscal Court. Section three, duration of the agreement. Is the intended, the undersigned Parties, that this agreement shall commence on the date of execution shown herein and shall expire at midnight, one calendar year from that set date. Section four, sterility is, to the extent of any provisions in clause, that this agreement is prohibited by any law or is deemed unforceful, such as prohibition or unforceful, shall not invalidate either of the provisions of clause that are in. Section six, entire agreement, the entire understanding of the Parties is embodied in this agreement. This agreement is signed and dated by the Parties below constitute a final written expiration of all terms of this agreement and complete and exclusive statement of those terms. Section seven, modification of agreement. No modifications, agreement shall be binding upon the Parties or any of them unless such modification in writing is due, except in writing. It says, "We have read and agreed all of the above terms and conditions, which is thoroughly understood, and signed by Russell County Judge Executive Randy M. Lawton, attested by clerk of fiscal court, Kimberly Blanchett, and signed, city of Jamestown Mayor Regina Hinton, attested, city clerk, city of Jamestown, and then a space for signature of Mary Ann Thomas, and signature from me to attest." And that's the full reading of it.
Has anybody got any questions or any discussions on the interlocking agreement, homeless prevention and support, two cities in the county?
Need a motion?
Need a motion?
Motion.
Got a motion, Cody?
I'll second.
Second, please.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Ms. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
And then Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Five oh. Thank you, council. The next thing on the agenda is the Resolution 2024-05. It's the authorization of sales of police department surplus?
Resolution number 2024-05. Authorization for the sale of police department surplus, surplus, govdeals.com. Whereas the city of Russell Springs, City Council recognizes the need to efficiently manage and dispose the surplus city property to maximize its value to the city. Whereas the Russell Springs Police Department has identified certain surplus items that are no longer needed for public purpose, specifically seven X26 tasers and four X26 holsters. Whereas govdeals.com provides a transparent, efficient, and effective platform for selling surplus government property to the highest bidder, being resolved by the Russell Springs City Council. That one, city clerk Christopher Ramsey, is hereby authorized to list and sell the specific surplus items belonging to the Russell Springs Police Department on govdeals.com. The items to be sold are the seven tasers and the four holsters. Number two, all proceeds from the sale of these surplus items shall be directed back to the Police Department General Fund, to support the department's operations and initiatives. Number three, city clerk is directed to take all necessary actions to facilitate the listing, sale, and transfer of this specified surplus items in accordance with the applicable laws, regulations, and govdeals.com policies. Number four, the resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage and approval, passed and approved by the Russell Springs City Council this 14th day of March 2024. Signed, Mayor Andy Thomas, attest, Christopher Ramsey, city clerk.
All right. Anybody got any questions? Any discussion? Need a motion?
Motion to sell.
I'll second.
Thank you, Timmy. Ask him a second.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Mann.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Five oh, chief. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. All right, the next thing on the agenda is the Resolution 2024-06. It's authorization to sell streets and department surplus?
That was a last-minute addition. That wasn't on the agenda. But I did send that out to you all on your email, but I'll go ahead and read it. Resolution number 2024-06, residents authorizing the sale of surplus property. Whereas the city of Russell Springs has determined that certain property owned by the city's parks and streets department is no longer needed for public use. And whereas the said property, specifically one 1997 Johnston 4,000 sweeper truck and one 2011 Ford Ranger, has been deemed surplus to the city's needs. And whereas the city of Russell Springs desires to dispose of this surplus property in a manner that is both efficient and maximizes the return to the city. Now, therefore, be resolved by the City Council of Russell Springs, Kentucky, that number one, authorization, the City Council hereby authorizes city clerk Christopher Ramsey to list and sell they aforementioned surplus items, specifically one 1997 Johnston 4,000 sweeper truck and one 2011 Ford Ranger on the online auction site govdeals.com. Number two, use of proceeds. The proceeds from the sale of these surplus items shall be directed back to the General Fund of the city of Russell Springs, be used in accordance with the city's financial policies and budgetary needs. Number three, condition of the sale. The sale of these items shall be conducted in accordance with all applicable laws and regulations governing the spatial of public property, and all sales shall be final. Number four, public notice. Appropriate public notice of the intention to sell this surplus property shall be given in accordance with city policies and state law requirements. Number five, effective date. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage and approval by the City Council, passed and approved by the City Council of Russell Springs, Kentucky, this 14th day of March 2024. Signed, Mayor Andy Thomas, attest, Christopher Ramsey, city clerk.
Anybody got any questions? This is, as Chris mentioned, this is the sweeper truck. We've been paying $490.86 insurance on it. And it's the old Ford pickup truck that was in the water department. Allen passed that down to the parks department. We've been paying $899.99 a year on it insurance. So, it's gonna save us about $1,300 a year in insurance to sell both of them. And we'll just, it'll just go right back into the general fund, so I think we need to get rid of both of them. So I need a motion to...
Why are we still insuring the sweeper truck if it wasn't possible?
What happens if somebody went over and caught it on fire, set it afire?
If it wouldn't run, it wouldn't make much difference.
Do what?
If it wouldn't run, then it wouldn't make much difference anyway.
What do you mean, if we wasn't driving?
If it wouldn't run, then...
It runs.
No?
And we'll bring it over and park it in the back, back here to sell it, where you can look at it if you're interested.
How's the new one doing?
Good. We've used it twice. They drained all the water out of it through the winter. And they've done, changed everything in it, and probably not, probably with the weather, the way it's looking, it'll probably next about four, get it back out.
I like the motion to sell those.
Okay, got a motion by Ricky. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa, all in favor. Give me a roll call.
Ms. Mann.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
And Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
To get back to your question or to another thing. If stuff says it's raining, and people knows it's a city, it's easy to break in, bust stuff up. And if we ain't no insurance on it, we just lose. It's like that little truck over our alley. Probably were fencing in sometime, weren't we?
Yeah.
All right, that's, that's, the next thing is some really good news. It's exciting news. It's for this community and this city and this county. Tractor Supply is coming, and we got a guy that's gonna be here tonight and introduce it. He will be your plant manager, or be your store manager, Brentley Gooden. Brentley, I'm gonna let you go to the floor and let you just talk about it a little bit.
All right. As a lifelong citizen of this area, I just want to say that thankful I am to be standing here representing Tractor Supply. I want to thank you guys for having me here tonight to be able to do this. You know, I'm celebrating my 25th year in retail. I can't think of any better way to do it than opening a store, a Tractor Supply store here in my hometown. So that's just a wonderful opportunity, not for only, just for the community itself and just all the surrounding community as well. I want to, first of all, I want to thank Mayor Thomas and Jeremy Coffey, Economic Development Director. These two guys have been all about bringing this business to our community. I've probably talked to Mayor Thomas dozens of times since last summer. Every little update, every little tidbit that we can get together on and try to push this through, to try and make it happen. Definitely, these guys have got a passion for bringing growth to our community, and I really appreciate them for all their help. We do have a soft open date scheduled. We are targeting June 22nd for a soft open date for the Tractor Supply 2953 in Russell Springs. We are also targeting a grand open date for June 29th, which will be that following weekend. Of course, this is assuming we don't run into any snags or anything along the way. I drop in on them quite a bit up there at the building, at the far end of the old Kmart building. And they're telling me right now that construction's going great. The building's in really good shape, from what they're telling me. And they're running on target right now for those dates. But of course, anything can happen between now and then. There's a lot more to be done. But we're very excited about that. We're looking to employ, most of our stores in this region employ an average of 15 people. That's what we're looking to do, starting out. We'll probably go a little above that, assuming that we may lose a few before then, before open, so we start out fully staffed. Of course, with our business, that can change as we go along. If we grow and we get busy, we're definitely gonna have enough people to run the stores. I'm hoping we can increase that number by the end of the year, but we'll see how that goes. We are, for anybody interested in applying for the store, approximately the week of April 8th, they can do that by going to tractorsupply dot jobs and searching for the Russell Springs zip code. They're taking applications for both full-time and overtime at that time. And then we'll be doing interviews, most likely at the Columbia location store. Some of the really cool features of the store that we're gonna be seeing is a live goods garden center that's gonna be attached to the store, where you can buy seasonally-specific live goods year-round in that facility that's attached to the store. We're also gonna have a pet wash. That's a room that you can go in inside the store, where you can take your dog. You can give it a bath. You don't have to make a mess that you're on home. We supply all the shampoos, all the wash bays, the towels, the dryers, the combs, the brushes, everything you need to get your dog all spick and span for one low price. And also, we are gonna have a drive-through pickup area for people who want to make an online purchase and they don't want to go in the store. They can go in one gate, they can check in on the Tractor Supply app. We'll bring your item to you, load it to you, and you go right out another gate. You never have to go inside the store. You can also do that if you have a large order and you want to call ahead. We can get that ready for you as well. So this day and time, we have really seen an uptick in people wanting to do online orders and contactless service, so really excited about that. You know, something about Tractor Supply that I really like in all of our stores, but especially coming into this town, we look to, we look forward to supporting local youth education, like with the 4H program, local FFA programs as well. We're gonna be looking forward to supporting local animal shelters any way we can and engaging with our community just any possible way at all. We are definitely community-focused and just looking forward to getting involved in absolutely any way at all that we can. Anybody got any questions that I might be able to answer for you? Pretty exciting times. Building's sat there empty a long time. And as a resident of the community, I'm just super excited to see something going in. New growth is always a good thing for the community, and I could be more pleased that I get to be a part of it with Tractor Supply. Thank you guys so much for having me.
Welcome home.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and everything you put in it, Brent.
And you have chicks, baby chicks.
We will have live chicks.
That's all I want to know.
Yes.
You just can't die. We got our ordinance against it.
I can't die.
Can't die chicks. Thanks a lot, chicks.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is the police report, chief.
It's nothing. February, we had a total of four DUIs. 12 warrants were served, 86 traffic stops, with 66 traffic charges decided. Seven of those should be investigated, with 17 traffic collisions and up to criminal cases. A total of 26 arrests and a total of 37 EDC inspections.
Any questions, chief? Y'all added in, chief. Appreciate you. Thank you. Before I get to Mayor's update, does the council have anything, questions or anything?
Made me think of a little ago, talking about protecting embassments and stuff. We've got a pretty good-looking park, bunch invested. And I really think, you know, chewing it over and stuff, we'll have a little family here soon, getting married. I think it'd be a pretty good idea for us to look into putting some cameras around the walking trails and, you know, overlooking around the park.
We've done started doing that. How many, Tommy, how many did you look at putting up today?
I just looked at four for the central area to start out with, and pointing in all four directions. And you can't expand it.
Well, how many they got over the maintenance shop right there?
You've got, now, this is more Jeremy's expertise, but I think there's three or four over there now, pointing out towards the walking trails and the tennis courts, splash pads, stuff like that. And then over, where we was looking at... And then over, what we was looking at was the concession stand behind the ball field, pointing all four corners to cover the stage, pavilion number two, tennis court, stuff like that. And if we do the Wi-Fi thing, we can keep setting them out, making more and more. So that's a-
Feed off each other.
Yep.
Give me a good peace of mind about kids and the girls.
We're a little bit ahead of you on that, Cody. We haven't installed now for about two, three months over there.
I wasn't sure where.
Been asked if we knew that. I mean, nobody's been notified or-
Well, you know, you walk over. It's your part. It just seems to his man.
Yeah, but I mean, it seemed to me like it'd be something that we'd been told about.
You know, that's why I'm gonna give an update on some more stuff that I know y'all ain't been able to look at either. Anybody else got anything? Uh, the five K is coming up over at the, uh, Methodist Church. It's gonna be Saturday, March twenty-third, another opportunity for the council to come and enjoy. If you want to show up and be involved and help with it. Uh, it starts at eight in the morning. It's called CR and the DR. And for more information, if you want to, uh, get involved in it, it's right here in the city of Russell Springs. It's, uh, it's called Church at the Springs, the old Methodist Church. You can get a hold of Lisa Coffey down there, and the number's two-seven-oh. If the council wants to write this down, two-seven-oh-eight-six-six-sixteen-hundred. And they'd love to have you, I'm sure, if anyone wants to help with it. And, uh, I think we've got the police involved in it, ain't we, chief? And the FAR, and I know the road department's involved in it, so, uh, it's just another opportunity for y'all to be there and work in it and getting back what Sherry talked about there. Splash pad update. I don't know if any of you seen it. It's coming along really, really well. Tommy, do you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. This is a great honor to be able to do this, because I was on council when we voted to do this. So it's, it's just like now, I've been handed this by Mayor Thomas when I started working here, and said he, he wants me to oversee the, you know, project management of it, so. It's going great. It's all just about completed. Uh, the sidewalk was poured around it today, um, so it should dry nicely. Uh, the plumbing has been installed already, and the fixtures have been installed. We're waiting on one to come in. Uh, and then we're building right next to it, um, sixteen-by-twenty-four little pavilion for picnic tables, a bathroom, and one is gonna be for storage and, um, controls for the splash pad. So it is really gonna be sweet over there, and a lot of people liked it so far. And it's good, because, like I said, I got to help my mom.
Thank you, Tommy, and I appreciate what you've done over there with it.
Glad to do it, Mayor.
And the next thing on the mayor's report is, uh, the ball field update. Everything's done, uh, over there. I've been, I've been over several times at night, and you wouldn't believe the people that's tickled to death that y'all voted to redo them and re, repick, resurface the infield, because they, and that's another thing that it's gonna save us. We ain't gonna have to buy no, no field, field conditioner, no chalk, no nothing. I mean, it's just, they're ready to roll right now, so, uh, next year will be so much easier to be ready to take off, because they painted all the dugouts, they painted concession stand, everything. They even put metal around the old building that houses all the lighting and stuff, so, uh, if you go over and circle all the way through it, you'll, you'll be amazed at what it. I've had two or three people call me and say, "It don't even look like the same place it did." And it don't. And then the next thing is, uh, God's Food Pantry. I met with them, uh, I met with them a couple times. They had a meeting. I guess it was yesterday or day before, and back in twenty-one, Chris? We voted to give them a half acre of property out there by the senior citizens building. So, uh, they voted yesterday to, uh, or day before when they had their meeting. I got a text this morning from Jamie, and they said they voted to move forward on building the building. So we will be, they want to build it out by the senior citizens building when the semis come. If they got something to drop off there, they can drop off at the senior citizens building and drop off back to them. So it worked out real good. Tony, uh, I can't think, what's Tony's last name from across the street?
Stevens.
Tony Stevens put this in, and put this plan in before COVID. And then COVID hit, and prices went up and everything, so they got scared, so. Now they have voted to move forward with that, so I want to let the council know, because if any of you ask me, you can let them know, yeah, we don't. We give them a half acre of land to build that property on, so. Uh, that's good, and I appreciate them, and I appreciate the council for doing that just for the, for the people here in this community. Does anybody else got anything?
I was gonna say, they need a little, they need a little head.
I need a motion to adjourn. A motion to Ricky, you need a second?
Second.
Hey, it's a Cody. I'm in favor, see ya? I'm in favor. We are adjourned.